Welcome to the June nineteenth, June ninth, two thousand twenty-two Palmer City School District Board of Education Work Sessions. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Roll call, please, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Unless there is an objection, we will dispense with the reading of the special meeting notice. Dr. Smala, can you please confirm that the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed? Yes, it is. Thank you. Could you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the public portion of this meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. Just a reminder, community members are welcome to attend the Board of Education work sessions. However, there is not an opportunity to participate. That leads us to Mr. Manteloff. The floor is yours, sir. Would you like to begin?
Okay, thank you for inviting me here. I appreciate it. As I, as I understand it, I am here to discuss having you handouts per usual. I understand that I'm here to discuss tax levy matters, different kinds of levies, and pros and cons of different kinds of levies, levy planning. And then, to the extent that you, that you want to also talk about it, we can talk about bond issue related matters as well, and the potential of November bond issue. And a lot of work has gone into laying the foundation for that over the last several months. And so I'm happy to talk about that as well. And any other thing that, that you might want to talk about that has to do with, with things and money? I don't really deal with the people's side of things, the labor and employment sides of things. But anything dealing with, with facilities, buildings, money, fair game. And so I thought what I would do just for discussion starters is, is to hand out what Sean gave to you. Just a one pager that, that is kind of a refresher. There's a one pager in green, and then there's a separate yellow one that has election deadlines for next year. Election deadlines for this November are at the bottom of the green page. So I think we might be referring to both. So let's start with the, with the green page and just kind of go over the, the current millage being levied by the Board of Education. You have operating millage in effect, forty-six point five voted mills for current expenses. Because of House Bill nine twenty, that rate has been reduced to nineteen point zero two effective mills this year on rezag property. There's two classes of property, rezag property and industrial commercial class two property. I'm just dealing with, with rezag for the moment. And then you also have various emergency levies that are in place totaling at this point nineteen point nine zero mills for collection this year. The millage rate bounces around from year to year as assessed valuation goes up and down. So the voters on an emergency levy do not approve a, not to exceed millage amount, rather they approve a dollar amount. And then the idea is that from year to year, as assessed valuation goes up and down, the county helps you adjust the dial so that you try to hit that dollar target is what you're doing with the four different emergency levies that you have on the books. What are the four? You got nine million, one ninety-seven, eight sixty. That's the, that equates to this year, four point five zero mills. And that is, that is in place for ten years, and it was renewed in two thousand nineteen. And it's good through collection year twenty thirty. So you're good on that one. You're good on the next one as well. Fifteen million, six twenty-four, six ninety-three, seven point six mills this year. Ten-year emergency levy, good through collection year twenty thirty-one. Don't have to worry about that for a while. Now, the next one, six, seven million, six oh three even, equating to three point eight mills this year. That's a ten-year levy. The last collection year there is twenty twenty-four. So that's the first one of the emergency levies that, that is of concern here for the Board of Education. And then the last one to complete the picture, eight million, oh sixty-two, five. Four mills is the, is the equivalent millage. Ten-year levy, again, all four of your emergency levies are ten-year emergency levies, last collection twenty twenty-seven. So, and then you have inside mills of five point one. All of that is going to operating. And other possible uses of inside millage could be for, for debt service, could be for permanent improvement purposes. If you moved inside millage, you could, what that means is you change the purpose of the inside millage. Right now, all of it is going to operating. So your total operating millage, when you add the voted millage together with the inside millage, and the inside millage is what you've been granted by the state government back in the early nineteen thirties. They, they said what you get, and, and that's, that, that is unvoted essentially millage. The rest is approved by the voters. Total millage for operating seventy-one point five mills. Again, because of House Bill nine twenty reduction factors, you're down to forty-four-ish mills, forty-four mills for operating purposes. You also have a three-mill permanent improvement levy. Three mills is what was voted on. But PI levies, just like your current expense levies, get dialed down to, to House Bill nine twenty. So you're down to two point one seven effective mills because of the appreciation of, of property. And thus, House Bill nine twenty kicking in, knocking down the effective millage for rezag, residential agricultural property, down to two point one seven total. Seventy-four point five mills, voted and unvoted, forty-six point one nine mills is what you guys levied last year. The Board of Education levies the taxes. The county permits them to, to be collected, but you guys levy the tax. And so you levied it last year for collection this year, and you're collecting four point, forty-six point one nine mills. So, as, as mentioned, well, then let's, I guess, let me pause there at each step along the way here to ask if there's any questions about what you guys already have in place. And, you know, so, yeah, again, any, any questions, fair game.
I know we explain it almost every time, but can you just explain for folks watching?
Yes.
How the difference between home values are only impacting, the difference only impacts the inside millage, not the voted-on millage?
Right, right. And, and because you are above the twenty-mill floor, you're well above the twenty-mill floor. That's a separate concept, but it relates to your question. Because you are above the, you have a total operating millage of forty-four effective mills, well above the twenty-mill floor. Then if there is an increase in home values that simply relates to reappraisal growth, your house just increased in value. We're not talking about adding an addition, you know, that doubled the value of your house. We're talking about values increasing because of appreciation. And those, those appreciations are, are kind of put on the books generally every three years. So there's a sexennial reappraisal that goes on throughout Cuyahoga County. And then, three years after that is a, is a triennial adjustment. And at those two times, the county, you know, tries to take into account increases in property values, in home values due to reappraisal growth. And when that happens, as a result of this bill that I was referring to earlier, House Bill nine twenty that was put in place in nineteen seventy-six, but I was, it was spearheaded by then Representative George Voinovich, actually. What happens is that just because your property value, your home value may double, for instance, in a hypothetical example, it doesn't mean you're paying twice that amount of taxes to the Palmer City School District. And so House Bill nine twenty is a taxpayer measure to say, look, if, you know, if your home value doubles, you're gonna pay the exact same amount that you were paying in terms of dollars. You're not gonna pay twice what you were paying, you're gonna pay the exact same amount. Well, how do you get there from here? Because you guys are levying mills and against the tax list and duplicate, against somebody's property. You're levying mills. So how do you get there from here? Well, what happens is, you levy the mills, you levy the voted mills. And you probably went through the tax budget process earlier this year, and the county spat out a resolution that Sean gave to you, probably in March or April, saying, "We are hereby levying the following rates for next, for collection next year." That process is done every year. So you're levying the voted rates. But what is being taxed against people's homes is not those rates because the state then takes those rates. And through the House Bill nine twenty, it reduces the millage through these reduction factors so that you wind up with the effective rates. So that in my example of home values doubling, the reduction factor would cut it in half. And so if you were levying four mills, all of a sudden now it's effective at two, not four. And so behind the scenes, you get to the effective millage rates so that homeowners pay the same amount of money.
So Rick, can I interrupt?
That's for current expense levy, not an emergency levy.
Can I interrupt you on that? So we did get two point one million dollars additional funds because of the reappraisal, and that's because of the inside millage. Could you explain that to them?
Yeah, and this is right. And so this is, yeah, sorry for the, winding my way to the answer to the question.
I much appreciate it. It's so that everybody can understand.
Right, 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 right. Yes, so then with respect to the, the, so with respect to voted millage, if you, the taxpayers, vote for this, this is our, our, the state's guarantee here that your millage, your dollars to Palmer CSD aren't gonna double if your home value goes up, if you vote for that millage. But there's inside millage. You guys have five point one mills. And that was given to you by the state, like I said, back in the nineteen thirties, when we went from fifteen mills to ten mills. We took a three-year aver, yeah, I won't get into all the historical details. Suffice it to say, in the early thirties, you guys were given five point one mills. Nobody voted on that. And so as to that, if there are increases in property values, that's fair game.
Right.
And so you will wind up with, every school district in the state will wind up with more money as, as it relates to the inside millage, if there are increases in, in property values at the triennial read, readjustment or the sexennial reappraisal. In full answer to your question, so that kind of gives you a big picture, I guess. We talked about emergency levies. Taxpayers aren't gonna pay more on emergency levies because if values go up, because you're trying to hit a certain dollar target. And so if, if values go up and you're trying to hit a certain dollar target, you know, the, the millage is actually gonna go down because you're trying to hit that same dollar target. And so for, and those are the four that you have in place, the emergency levies. But you also have current expense levies. That's the forty-six point five mills. That gets subject to House Bill nine twenty reduction factors to get you the effective millage. And then there's the inside millage. That completes the picture. And that's, and you get more money. And you get less money if, if values, values go down. And that, that happened a good dozen, fourteen years ago, right?
So I'll follow up to that question.
Yes.
I think the average increase in Palmer was about sixteen percent. So homeowners believe that, well, my property values went up sixteen percent. That means PCSD gets sixteen percent more in tax revenue.
Only as it relates to that one specific teen, teeny part of the whole puzzle.
I wanted you to explain that it's only the inside millage is all we get.
It's that piece of the larger puzzle, yes. So it's the, it's the five point one mills compared to the overall millage of forty-four point zero two effective. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So we have total operating.
Right.
Seventy-four point five mills. We're not gonna talk about effective real quick. We're gonna talk about seventy-four point five mills. So if we had little bouncy balls all laid out, we had seventy-four point five bouncy balls. Only three of those bouncy balls could ever grow bigger. The only other ones could ever grow smaller, correct? The millage, because they represent a mill.
It's the five point one, yeah.
Oh, sorry, five bouncy balls. I was looking at the permanent improvement, sorry. Only five bouncy balls could ever grow bigger. All the rest, the millage could only shrink.
Unless, asterisk footnote, and, and I never had to worry about this footnote for my, for most of my career until the Great Recession. That, that happened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, because property values actually went down. And what happens is this House Bill nine twenty thing. Let's say property values got, in my hypothetical example, which is more, more recent, property values are going up significantly. So I talked about, you know, what if they doubled? Well, what if they got cut in half? The question on the table is, does the state government, now House Bill nine twenty, does House Bill nine twenty operate in reverse? Does it jack up the effective rates, again, to try to hit that same dollar figure? Answer, it does. And so that's the, the asterisk. I hope that we don't have to worry about that historical blip anymore. And I, and I hope we're back to where we used to be, where with continually rising assessed valuations, home values. And in that environment, the balls, as you say, the bouncy balls are only gonna get smaller. They did get a little bit bigger during the Great Recession because House Bill nine twenty works in reverse.
But their cash value never changed.
But the cash value did not change.
Got it. So only five bouncy balls out of the seventy-four and a half could ever change in cash value.
So there's, and the, the, the other piece of this is that, that there's a cap. That's another, another concept here, that when the voters approve a millage levy, again, not the emergency levies that you have in place, but the voters have approved in, in Palmer CSD a while ago, current expense levies that have a certain millage tied to them. And in the aggregate, we're talking about forty-six point five mills. That's the aggregate amount that the voters have approved for current expenses over the years. Now, when they vote for like a four-mill current expense levy, they're saying, "We're permitting you to tax me up to four mills, but never any higher." And so a lot of school districts that went out with a four-mill current expense levy back during the Great Recession were very surprised because they, the voters approved a four-mill current expense levy. Assessed valuations plummeted during the Great Recession. And so because the millage is capped, I said, "The House Bill nine twenty works in reverse"? It does, but you hit what the voters approved at some point. And so all those districts that went out with, you know, four or whatever mill levies back when the Great Recession hit, all of a sudden got a case of the shorts. It was like, "We thought we were getting four million dollars. Now we're only getting three point five million dollars. Ugh." Why did that happen? Because you could never levy above four, and because assessed valuations went down. Basic math, four mills times a reduced AV is reduced money. That's what happened. So it, does that make, that makes sense? Yeah, okay.
Thank you for explaining. Oh, so go ahead.
Good.
Oh, just a quick question. The inside millage, you said that was, the state gave us to us in the nineteen thirties, ninety years ago? There's no way to petition the state to change the inside millage?
That would take a constitutional amendment, yes.
So that's, it's in the Constitution?
It is, that's, that.
So we're stuck at five mill, period.
Right. And, and just a, a little brief history, thirty seconds worth of history, because it's interesting, and I think it's an important concept here in this great state of Ohio. Constitutionally and by law, wherever you live in the state of Ohio, you can't be taxed more than ten mills without your vote. Now, back before the, the Great Depression of the nineteen thirties, before that, the Constitution said that, you know, wherever you live in this great state of Ohio, you can't be taxed more than fifteen mills without your vote. And so back in the, say, in the nineteen twenties, various overlapping subdivisions, taxing authorities. So you guys aren't the only taxing authority that can levy a tax. There's the, there's the county government, there's the city government. There can be other government, overlapping governmental entities. And the concept is, is that you add them all up. And you can never go above fifteen back then. And then, as a result of the Great Depression, they reduced that down to ten. And, and that's where we are now. And so if you add up all, what, the county government?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so like the county, the library, the, the metro parks, all those together will equal ten.
Or less.
Yeah, and so that's why we can never go up higher.
Yes, that's, that's right, yeah.
Excellent question, Mark. Thank you.
That's right. You can't go, can't go higher, right. Yes.
Regarding this, this was part of my question as well. The inside millage, how was that determined? What was the basis for us having the amount that we have?
Yeah.
All those many years ago?
Right. So what, what they did is they looked at, like, like I said, overlapping subdivisions were, back in the day, able to, to levy millage within what was then the fifteen-mill limitation. And so, and they varied a lot back then. Sometimes Palmer would, would levy, Palmer Schools would levy, you know, five point one, then maybe five point three, then maybe four point nine. And so, and other political subdivisions did the same thing. And so I actually have this spreadsheet that the state gave me. It's kind of fascinating. I came across it on Saturday as I'm cleaning out my office for this office move. It's kind of fun to look at, kind of back in the day, who was levying what when? And so they took what Palmer CSD was levying in nineteen, in nineteen, I think, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three in that, in that area, three-year average. And so in that, in my hypothetical example there, the five point three, the five point one, the four point nine, that would average out the, you know, to five one or whatever. And then what they would do is they would multiply that by two-thirds, because we had to go from fifteen down to ten. So it's a three-year average of what you were levying at the time, times two-thirds equals what you got now. That's, that's the history of where we are, where we are. And so this, yeah, this history does go back a good hundred years. And so, yeah. Does that answer the question? I guess fascinating, and I just happened to come across it on Saturday.
Well, I was thrown. I never knew that that was set in the nineteen thirties.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so that shocked me that there's been no adjustment since the nineteen thirties over all this time.
Isn't that crazy? But, yeah, that said, just going to do a little deep dive here. What if, I said ten or less, ten or less mills, right? Well, out in Beechwood, it's less than ten mills. So all of the overlappers wind up levying less than ten mills. And so what did Michelle Mills, the, Sean's equivalent, the treasurer out in Beechwood Schools, she said, "Oh, so it looks like we're only at, at nine or less. Hmm. So we're not at ten. So there's quote-unquote free-range millage out there. I'm gonna go for it," you know, and talked to the board, their Board of Education out in Beechwood, and said, "We're gonna, we're gonna go for that mill." And worked, they worked with the county, and they showed a need for the one mill on their tax budget that is submitted every January. And lo and behold.
Worth ten.
Exactly. I just asked him, he said, "We're at ten."
We have no free range.
They grabbed that, that one extra mill that was hanging out there. Now, there's politics associated with that, and as you know, I'm a former board member, and so I'm keenly, keenly aware of and sensitive to the politics of things like that. And as you might expect, you know, you're, you're levying an additional mill, and you haven't asked the voters for it. You're just doing it. You're, you're saying, "Give me that mill." "Oh, okay." It hadn't been levied before, and now it's being levied. And so they're levying one point zero mills or whatever it was. I think it was around there on an unvoted basis. So there are politics associated with things like that. So that's, you know, anyway. And there, there are more, more districts than just Beechwood, but that's a, that's a prime example. It's in Cuyahoga County, and it happened maybe ten years ago or something like that.
I just had one real quick question.
Yeah, sure.
So one mill, so people understand, is basically one dollar in tax for every hundred dollars of assessed value of your home, correct? Of what the county assesses your home at. Like, my old home was assessed at thirty-nine thousand dollars. I, even though the house was worth a hundred and seventy-five, the county assessed it as a value of thirty-nine thousand dollars for tax purposes. I paid thirty-nine hundred dollars a year in taxes. So it was one per hundred of assessed.
Assess, yeah. So you wanna, you wanna focus on the assessed piece of that because the, the idea is that if you have, if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, just to make the math easy, then what they are going to do is they are going to assess it for tax purposes. So the market rate, what you could get on, on the, in the open market, that's what the county does every three years roughly, particularly on, during the sexennial reappraisal, reappraisal. They focus hard on, on what you could get for that house. And let's say it's a hundred thousand dollar market value. They're not gonna tax you at a hundred thousand dollars. They're gonna tax you at thirty-five percent of that. So they're gonna pretend that your house is worth thirty-five thousand dollars, not a hundred thousand dollars. And then they are going to apply the rates, the effective rates that we've been talking about here, which in your case is forty-six point one nine mills for all purposes. Forty-six point one nine mills times your thirty-five thousand dollar assessed house equals a certain dollar amount. And, and that's what you wind up paying on your tax bill. And, and a mill, kind of an archaic term, but it's, but it's, it's basically one one-thousandth. And so the, you know, the fun, fun history here is that mill, kind of, in French, it's like mia, that's a thousand. But the, the idea was, how do we get, how do we get five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet in a mile? What's, what's, how do, how do those, how does that work? Well, the, the idea was, back in the Roman times, it was about a thousand paces. Mill, thousand, thousand paces, and each pace, like my pace is about five feet. And so that's how you get the five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet in a mile. So that's just kind of one way that I, I remember, mill equals a thousand. And, and so one mill in tax language is one one-thousandth. So I don't know if that helps you remember it.
I just know it's very confusing to people what a, what a mill actually is.
Yeah, right, right.
Really didn't figure out how to class for that.
Thousand paces, five hundred, five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet. Okay, so these are all great deep-dive questions to establish the foundation, I guess, for, and are there any others?
I have one.
Yes.
And I, I know we're gonna eventually ask you for a clear recommendation, and I don't want to take too much time, but.
Sure.
The legislature held up the Fair School Funding Act. It's this dramatic revolution in school finance. Quite frankly, this is the same stuff we've been looking at for our duration of times that we've been sitting in these seats or having these roles. Can, can you talk a little bit about how that really didn't fundamentally change a whole lot?
Well, yes, good, good point. There's, there, going back to kind of the early part of my career, I remember this case called the Duroff case came out. And, and it talked about how this, this state's funding, a system of funding education is unconstitutional. There was an over, unconstitutional over-reliance on property taxes. And so, you know, since then, there's, there have been, you know, various pushes at various times. Since then, and it's, it's been going on twenty-five years, that, that the legislature has made significant attempts to, to try to change the formula and to bring about maybe a better balance between state funds and, and local funds. And there, you know, there are different political points of view on how far we have come since, since Duroff to rectify the unconstitutional over-reliance on property taxes. But I guess the proof is in the numbers, which we will, which we will look at later. The Board has approved recently a five-year forecast. You know, Pam has the five-year forecast ready to go on, on the big screen. And, and we can, we can show what the expected revenues are from, from state funds, from state education aid. And we can show what a, what a big hole there is to fill over time, over a five-year stretch. And then, and then Sean has it projected over a ten-year stretch, and that's on the spreadsheet that we will soon see. There, there are large holes to fill, and how are we gonna fill them? We're simply not going to be able, we can't fill them with, with state funds. They're, it is what it is. And yet, we are talking about massive red numbers out into the future. How do we deal with that? Well, there's only one answer that you guys have effectively, and that is increases in property taxes. Of course, you can go down the road. I said only one answer. There's, there's income tax as well. And some school districts, although not really in Cuyahoga County, but some school districts, particularly more in rural counties, have gone with an income tax or some combination thereof. So I misspoke when I said there's only one option that you have. You can try an income tax. But, but anyway, we, we'll, we'll do a deep dive into that to the extent that you would like to. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, anything else before we move on to basic options? Okay, good. So they, so we've set the table now, the basic types of levies to, to consider for, for operating purposes. Let's start there. I, I mentioned that you guys, right now, have two different kinds of, of operating levies essentially in place. You have millage-based current expense levies, and you have emergency levies. Those are dollar-based, not millage-based. Again, you're trying to hit a certain dollar target. Let's talk about current expense levies first, millage-based. And so you can do an additional levy. That's a classic, you know, when I was in, in Rocky River. was in, in Rocky River, you know, every, every five years or so, we would put a current expense levy on for a continuing period of time. That's a classic school district Board of Education levy. And then, it gets put into your, your general fund. And, and that, those kinds of levies can go on for either five, up to five years, or for a continuing period of time. Now, I was asked to, to discuss briefly replacement levies. So, fact of the matter is, is that you guys have in place current expense, village-based levies that were voted on a long time ago. And over time, because of House Bill nine twenty, they've been, the effective rates have been whittled down to what you see on the paper. Now, by replacing a current expense levy that you already have in place, you're saying, all right, House Bill nine twenty has taken us from four down to two effective mills. Let's bring it back up to where it was. Let's bring it back up to, to four. Our costs have increased over time, but yet, due to House Bill nine twenty, revenue has not kept pace. So, let's, let's bump it back up. That's the concept of a replacement levy, is we pick one, one or more of your levies and say, let's bring the effective millage of that particular levy back up to where it used to be. Not where it is now, because of House Bill nine twenty reduction factors, but where it used to be when the voters first voted on it. Now, that's, that's an option that you have. In my experience, again, twenty-seven years of, of doing this for about a hundred school districts, don't, I haven't done more than a handful of replacement levies. I mean, the concept is sound. It makes sense. It's like, well, okay, I get this House Bill nine twenty thing, but our costs are going up. And so, why don't we just take it to where it used to be, you know, instead of where it is now, to take account of those increases? The, the argument makes sense. But, the fact of the matter is, the politics, in my experience, have intervened. And, and there's a lot of concern. And there's been concern legislatively. In fact, I was down in Columbus arguing against a, a law that would undo, that would eliminate replacement levies, because it is, there's a concern that there, there might be a confusion between a renewal and a replacement levy. And that, as a result of that confusion, of renewal, meaning your taxes aren't gonna increase, we're just asking you to kind of extend the duration of the tax, as opposed to a replacement, which is actually gonna increase your taxes, because of that potential confusion. Boards of Education don't touch it, because they don't want the, the potential, you know, backlash from trying to, you know, pull one over on the voters. That's the politics of the situation. Again, the, the argument is sound, but the politics intervene, again, in my experience. And so, there, there's been legislation to try to undo it because of that, to eliminate it. So, that's the, the concept of a replacement levy. So, is it an option? Yes. Is it often pursued by boards of education? No. Can you do it? Yeah. I mean, there's, you know, it's, it's fair game legally, as your legal advisor. Incremental levy, now, there's, that isn't used much either. But, you know, I bring it up because some school districts, even in, in Cuyahoga County, I'm thinking back, early in my career, I did, I did one of these incremental levies for Strongsville. I did one fairly recently for Solon, where the idea is that the voters are approving a, a specific tax rate in year one. And then, that tax rate can grow in year two, three, four, five, at, at a specific increment. So, you could start off with three nine, and then tack on, you know, point five, point five, point five, and point five, such that you go from three nine to five nine over a five-year period of time. And so, that's, that's a legal option. Again, a few school districts in Cuyahoga County have, have done that. So, the, let's see. So, those, so, let me pause there and, and see if there are any questions about current expense levy. Again, millage-based levies, those are the, the basic options. You know, are there variations on the theme? Yes. But, those are the, those are the basics. Any questions?
We don't have any of these incrementals.
That's correct. You do not have any incrementals on your books. That is correct.
How does nine twenty affect an incremental if it, if it, if it resets in the middle of while it's, you know, in your five-year period? Then, the house values reset. Does the millage, it all reset the same way?
They will, the, the reduction factors, House Bill nine twenty will look at the millage being levied in any given year. And if you're in the, kind of, the middle of that, you know, incremental, you know, period of time, I guess, where you're, where you're adding the increments over time, they'll just look at the levy that you're levying in that particular year, and they will, they will apply the reduction factors in that particular year to achieve the outcome. And they do that from year to year to year.
But the increments would stay the same afterwards?
Yeah. The, the increments, yeah. So, the increments, you, they have to be the, the same increment. So, I mentioned like point five, point five, point five. You couldn't go point five, point seven five, one, you know, they have to be the same increments in years two, three.
No, but what I'm saying is, they won't reset the increments where it was, you voted on point five, and then nine twenty resets it. And then, you know, in the fourth year, instead of being point five, it's point three.
Yeah, that's a sophisticated question, yes. And so, again, what you'd be levying is the, is the, the voted millage. So, in my example, you'd be levying three point nine plus point five. That's what you levy. And then, and then when it, then when the, things get reset, I guess, in, say, year three, you're levying another point five. But what the state is doing behind the scenes is they're saying, all right, you guys are levying, in that example, four point nine mills, not three point nine, but you've put, you've tacked on another point five and a point five. And then, they say, all right, you're levying four point nine. And so, that point five is a new tax, not subject to the House Bill nine twenty reductions. But the other ones have already kind of taken into account the House Bill nine twenty reduction. So, they, you know, they already have the production factors kind of built in. Oh, man. How to explain this better? Boy, is that a...
So, does the, so, does the second...
It's such a sophisticated question. I have to, like, really...
Does the second...
Sorry.
No, it's a great question. So, does the second point five ever have the potential to be on a higher tax value of a house, higher tax assessed value than another incremental jump during that levy cycle? Like, if, say, in twenty twenty, we had an incremental. We don't. This is all hypothetical, everyone. We had a hypo, we had it, right.
Think through the options. Yep.
And in twenty twenty-one, it went up point five. And then, in twenty twenty-two, before it was ready to go up again, another point five in our increment.
Yeah.
House values were redone. Does that next point five reflect the new house values, or the house values the day the original millage was voted, even though it's incremental?
Yeah. The, the new point five would be applied to the new assessed valuation.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, all right. Yeah, so, sorry, I was fumbling over my words there.
No, that's okay. I was...
But, yeah, that, that example helped me clarify in my mind.
My brain started going. As soon as Mark asked, my brain started going. And I was like, wait, wait.
Just real quick, you said some school districts have done that. Have any of them done it recently?
Uh, let's see. I can answer that.
Or is it something that used to?
I think Solon's was in the last couple of years.
It was recent?
It was in the last couple of years.
That's it. You don't have to go through all that. It's fine.
Solon was done May of two thousand eighteen, millage incremental levy. So, they, they, they just went from one point six to, here's their ballot. Here it is. Oh, actually, you guys were on the ballot at the same time, with your fourteen million, seven two four, three twenty-seven.
You mean another one that failed?
It was, that was, so you guys were on there, and Solon was as well. And they started with a rate of, let's see, which may increase. So, they started at one point six, and they added a single increment of six point nine. So, they just went one point six.
Oh, wow.
Done. Boom, boom, done.
So, they, when they voted on, when they vote on these incrementals.
Yeah.
They, say, we use your example of the three point nine, point five, point five, point five, point five. They vote on that's gonna happen no matter what, right?
Right. Did they show the voters the second number?
Yeah.
My gosh. That's a gigantic change. Yeah, yeah.
That is a change.
Just the thought process for doing that.
Yeah. I think the, the thought process, yeah, the, the basis for that, I'll, I'll think back to, ah, Strongsville. My memories faded a little bit, but I, my recollection is that they were, they were having a, a rough time passing a, a current expense levy. They needed money in their general fund, and they were having a rough time passing it. And so, they said, let's, let's sharpen our pencils here. Instead of asking for, let's say, five mills, I don't remember what it was, and kind of overshooting so that, so that we can only ask once and not have to ask again, you know, five years later, overshoot now, let the levy cycle kind of catch up, and then overshoot again, and then let the levy cycle catch up, which is kind of the, you know, that's kind of what we're stuck with in the state of Ohio. Let's sharpen our pencil and only ask the voters for what we need this year. And then, because costs are going up and revenues aren't keeping pace, let's have them, ask them in advance if we can tack on, you know, a little bit more next year, looking at our five-year forecast, you know, trying to make revenues align with expenditures. Let's, let's ask them in advance to tack on a little bit more, and then a little bit more, as opposed to the other approach, which I mentioned, was to, it was to not take that from year to year, but overshoot. And then, eventually, expenditures wind up exceeding revenues, and then we have to do this all over again. It's the, it's the sine wave levy cycle that all boards of education in Ohio have to deal with.
Which is the usual.
Which is the usual, right.
Well, what about...
Yeah.
I, I'm real interested in this one point six going to six point nine.
Yeah, well, going eight point five, yeah, yeah.
Or, oh, okay.
Yeah, right, right, right.
How that was conceived and sold more than, I guess.
I think that might be more of a question for Solon's political action committee.
I don't wanna tie up too much time, you know, on these...
I do, I do have a question that maybe you can answer while you're explaining both of ours.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Are there rules in the incremental, I mean, I know there's rules. What are the rules in terms of how many times can you increase it? How often can you increase it? How long can that levy be for? Is that something that you could start with, like, two mills and increase at half a mill every single year for the next ten years?
Up, up to five. So, there's, there's like four. So, you start with a base.
Right.
In that case, it was one point six. You tack on six point nine. You wind up with eight point five. And they went up for a continuing period of time. So, once that second increment kicked in, it was eight point five forever and ever, unless it's, you know, reduced by voter, the taxpayers, et cetera, et cetera. So...
So, that was a continuing levy?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I'll double-check that. I did those proceedings. I ought to know this. Let's see.
Shoot, it's right.
Maximum rate, from an original, okay. Current expenses, maximum rate.
I think, I think it might be a great way...
Yeah. The aggregate rate will be in effect for a continuing period of time.
I think it might be a great way to just address the current economic situation and still connect with voters in a way that, you know, we're, we're sensitive to the idea that times are really tight right now. But if we had to go this route, this is an option, given the fact that...
I like the option.
I do, too.
Hey, Rick, I hate that, I know, we only have fifteen minutes left.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do want you to get to substitute levies and the renewed levies, because those are very relevant to us.
Go, go, go.
You know, incremental is very interesting. We can talk about it all night.
All right.
I need you to please talk about...
Didn't know there was only fifteen minutes left.
Pedal of the metal, Sean, keeping me on task. I appreciate that. Okay. That's, that's all good. So, the emergency levies, you got four of them. Let's talk about those for a second, and substitute levies. So, so you have four emergency levies. You can do what you've always done here and renew them. A lot of school districts, when they're up for renewal, and we talked about when they're last collected, when can, when are they up for renewal? Well, let's just take your, the, the seven point six million dollar one that last collection year, as you see on your page, is twenty twenty-four. When can you ask the voters to renew that tax? No, no increase in the amount there. And assuming assessed valuation changes, no increase in taxes either. It's just a renewal. So, you can first ask them in May of twenty twenty-three. That's why I handed out that yellow piece of paper, because it has the May two thousand twenty-three election date and the deadlines associated with it. Should you choose, at the first opportunity, to renew that particular emergency levy, and those are the deadlines, that's the date that you're looking for. And then, you can go back again in November of two thousand and twenty-three. That's the second time. And then, and then you could go on in the last collection year as well in twenty twenty-four. So, you could start looking at that in twenty twenty-three in May. And, and so, there's, there's a tweak to, to that, this part of the discussion, I guess, a footnote, if you will, to this part of the discussion. You don't, you don't have to just renew one. You can renew more than one at the same time, as long as you can, as long as one of those emergency levies is up for renewal. And there's a footnote to that in a second, but I'll get to it. So, what's the idea here? Garfield Heights, I used, I love to use, you know, examples, because I think they highlight the points. So, Garfield Heights had three, I think, emergency levies in place, and they felt like they were going to the voters, you know, every year. There were five-year levies, I think. And it was just like, all right, can we reduce voter fatigue and just kind of stretch these out, you know, from maybe five years to ten years? They took two out of their three levies, and they combined them for purposes of a vote, and did a, just a combination renewal of, of emergency levies. Mount Vernon had four, and they, they wound up combining two, and then two. So, then they wound up with two emergency levies. And then, they combined the combined levies into one. So, they, they went from four to two, two, down to one. And so, again, with the, with the idea to reduce, you know, voter fatigue. And so, that's a possibility for, for you. Now, of course, the more you combine emergency levies, the, the higher the, the millage gets on the ballot, even though it's a, it's a renewal, not an increase in taxes. Still, if you were to combine, say, the, the three point eight mil one together with any, pick any other one, or more. You could combine all four if you wanted to, legally. But if you combined that one with the fifteen million dollar one, the seven point six and the fifteen point six, now, on the ballot, if this were going on this year, it would be eleven point four mills. And so, when I, when I talked to the Garfield Heights leadership about combining all three, they were like, ew, if we combine all three, the millage is gonna be like in the twenties. Ah, we, we don't wanna go there politically. So, they said, let's just go with two. But again, legal option for you guys.
Even though there's, it's the same millage that they are collecting.
That's correct.
It just looks ugly.
It looks, it's eye-popping on the ballot. And also, and I faced this in Cleveland, because I represent Cleveland schools, they, they have a, they have a twenty mil, you know, levy on. And so, it's all in. When that's, when that levy is on the ballot, and so, the more you combine, the more you're putting at risk a, a larger amount of money. If you don't, if something happens in the district and, and, and there's a, a lot of voter frustration, and they don't pass levies, and you need not just seven million anymore, you need twenty-three million. Now, you're all in on twenty-three. You're not all in on seven point six. So, that, again, we're talking about pros and cons and considerations and those kinds of things. Yeah.
When you do, when you consolidate the, the renewal levies.
Yes.
Are they then voted, I just wanna clarify this.
Yeah.
Are they then, the millage on the tax valuation from the day they were originally voted on years and years and years ago, or because it's a now, it's, it's a new type of thing. It's not necessarily just a renewal. It's like a consolidation of renewals. Are they now then on the current tax valuation?
Yeah. They're treated essentially, for those purposes, as just, as separate renewals for state law purposes. They're just combined in one vote, but...
So, it's not gonna cost the homeowner any more money?
Nope.
That's just, I wanted to clarify that.
You know, it's one vote, but they're treated as separate. And for, and that matters sometimes, because there can be like one emergency levy that has homestead and rollback subsidies associated with it, if it was approved prior to September two thousand thirteen.
I didn't get into that with them.
Oh, you did?
That, no, that'd be another whole...
Okay.
[laughing]
Thank you, Sean, again, keeping me on task. I appreciate that.
Can you, can you have a combined replacement and new money issue, where they're the, on the same vote yes bubble? So, say, the first eight mills, or however many, would never cost you any more money than you're already paying now. But, in addition to that, there is a two mills new operating money attached to this, but it's one vote? Is that possible?
Yes, it is. You can do it with, with your emergency levies. You can renew and increase an emergency levy. So, take the seven point six mil one that's first up next year, if you want it to be. You could renew and increase that. And so, if you wanted to increase it by roughly three point and... 3.8 mils again, you would, you would say, you know, a 7.6 million dollar of renewal of an emergency levy with an increase of 7.6 mils. And then on the ballot, it would read for a total of 7.6 mils, not 3.8 anymore. So yes, legally, you can renew and increase an emergency levy. And you mentioned replace and increase. You could also do that, again, and once we go down the road of replacement levies, it gets dicier politically, but you could take one of those current expense levies, not an emergency levy, replace it and increase it. So that would be like a double increase, because when you replace a current expense levy, you're already increasing.
Right.
The voters' taxes. And then you could increase it on top of that. It's a double win.
We don't want to do that. We don't want to double whammy anybody, but I was just very.
But an emergency levy, yeah, just the terminology would be a renewal and an increase.
Is there any way to get rid of the emergency levy terminology?
Yes.
Because that confuses people on the ballot.
Yes.
The substitute levy. Let's talk about that.
Okay. Yep. So, so yes, and, and I'll get to that in 30 seconds. So the, you can get rid of the emergency levy. We did that in Mentor. They went into fiscal emergency. Dan Wilson, the treasurer, was like, we got, you know, we don't want to, we're out of fiscal emergency. We, you know, we want to get rid of that. And so what we did there, and what Brooklyn schools down the road, Brooklyn schools has a bunch of things on the ballot that look and feel a lot like emergency levies, but they're avoid an operating deficit levies. It's the same statute, it's the same concept, it's the same everything, it's just different language. Can you switch midstream? That's what Dan Wilson did, yeah. Out in Mentor, switch from emergency levy to, to avoid an operating deficit. And again, there's plenty of examples right down the road in Brooklyn.
I think that's much.
They got three or four of those.
I think that's much clearer. Even my husband came home after the last one, and he was like, hello, what is this? And I was like, it's the original language. It's just, it's there. I can't, I didn't know we could change it at that time. I didn't know up until two minutes ago. So I appreciate that, because it does, it confused me, and I, listen, I read everything Sean sends me, and it still confuses me sometimes. So, thank you very much.
Sure. And now the substitute levy, all this is building to the, to the substituted levy. So substitute levies can be pursued legally by boards of education that have emergency levies in place, and you guys do. So we can talk about this. So what, what you would do with a substitute levy, which, which actually we drafted for a particular client, became law back around, you know, 12 years ago-ish, and nobody really did it, but it, but for years, for about a decade. And now these things are popping like popcorn. School districts around the state and around northeast Ohio are starting to do these, from Avon, Avon Lake, Barberton, Sheffield, Sheffield Lake, Firelands, on and on and on. The basic concept is to, is to say, we're going to substitute one or more emergency levies with this new kind of levy for the quote-unquote necessary requirements to go to your language issue. It's for the necessary requirements of the school district. And in year one, let's say you did a substitute levy for the one that we've been talking about, the 7.6 million dollar emergency levy.
I, David, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
I was considering the C and D, putting those together.
C and D.
As a substitute levy.
Okay, as a substitute. All right. So Sean is suggesting there that we take the 7.6 million dollar one, and we add on, tack on the 8 million dollar one, that you can see right underneath it on the green piece of paper. So now, and you can do that. You can combine more than one. And in the examples that I mentioned, I think in all cases, it would, it was at least two that they were combining, sometimes up to five that they were combining. So in this, in Sean's example, you're combining those two, and you're saying to the voters, please approve this, and here's, here's what would happen. In year one, you would wind up trying to collect 15.6 million dollars, which is the, the 7.6 plus the eight in year one. So same old, same old. But let's say now that there is new construction, not, not increases in, in valuation due to simply reappraisal, but there's new construction going on.
Of homes, you mean, or businesses? Homes or businesses?
Homes, businesses, whatever. There's new construction going on. So, so property is being added to the tax listed duplicate. It's not merely being reappraised at higher values, it's getting added. Well, if you have an emergency levy, you don't get any more money if property is added. And what winds up is people's taxes go down, the rate goes down, so that you wind up achieving the same 15.6 million dollars. But if property is added in a substitute levy context, you apply the same rate that everybody was, was paying on, but you take that rate and you apply it to the new property as well. So you get more money. So that helps the school district keep pace with the rising costs, because now you're applying the, the rate that everybody's already paying, which is basically the emergency levy rate, and you're applying that to the new construction. So the school districts winds up, school district winds up with more money. So that's one benefit of this substitute levy, is it's, it's termed as a growth levy, because it grows, the revenue grows as more property is added to the tax listed duplicate. Looks like you have a question.
Rick, can I jump in?
I do, but go ahead, Charlie, you first.
We may be asking the same question. Is that an addition on someone's home, or is that actual new construction?
New construction. Well, an addition on a home would be, would be new, would be new construction.
So if your home is reappraised and goes up dramatically, because you actually added, you know, an in-law suite, now that substitute actually is going to collect on that in-law suite?
On that, on, yes, because it would be, it would not be quote-unquote carryover property, it would be new, added to the duplicate.
But it doesn't affect people, you know, just the average person, it doesn't affect them?
They would pay, they would pay the same. Now, importantly, it's, it's fair to point out, they're not going to pay, they're not going to pay less.
Yeah, right.
But they're not going to pay more.
Correct. That's, yeah.
Yeah, right, right, right. That's an important political point.
So, Rick, on our emergency levies right now, you can do five years and 10 years. So on a substitute levy, explain to them what the options are.
Yeah, a good segue. So that's the other advantage, the other basic advantage of the substitute levy, is you can go up to 10 years or for a continuing period of time. So emergency levies can't go more than 10 years, as you know. And you have all four years going out, the max, 10 years. But a substitute levy, you could, you could have the voters approve that it go out for a continuing period of time. So A, you get growth, B, you don't have to worry about that for purposes of your five-year forecast for the rest of your lives. Yes.
So on the past emergency levies.
Yes.
Anything that was built since the inception of that, are they on there? I guess I'm confused with that. So like, if we passed an emergency levy, 2009, we passed one. It was renewed for then 10 years. I think it was actually before that. But are the new houses that were built, so not a pre, increase in appraised value, but new homes that were built, were they added on to that, or no, because it was an emergency levy and it was the dollar amount? So like, have we not captured tax from, or does it change at the renewal?
Well, in your example, you know, new homes get added, or a shopping mall goes up or something like that, that all, that all, all of that stuff increases the, the bottom line, well, at the top, actually, your aggregate assessed valuation. And then what the county does is it takes the aggregate assessed valuation, which would include, in your example, you know, a new home, and say, and they say, all right, that's the assessed valuation they need to collect, because the voters approved, 7.6 million dollars is what the, the district has coming to it. So we take the aggregate assessed valuation, and we multiply it by something in order to get 7.6 million dollars. And that, that something is the millage, and that, and that bounces around. So the, so the aggregate takes into account.
Okay.
A new shopping center, or a new home, or an addition on your, an in-law suite, it takes that all into account in the aggregate. And then in order to get there from here, they just do the, the math. This divided by that equals mils, and that's what, that's what is levy, you know, from year to year. Bounces around.
I'm really in the weeds, but I think a very realistic scenario. How does an abatement then impact? I mean, so we, we could essentially put on this, this substitute, but then we could almost waive the right for new collection through an abatement, I'd imagine? Does that, do school districts walk themselves into that?
If property taxes are abated, yeah. So, yeah, so it would just be the, the, the property that is added to the tax listed duplicate, and that property taxes are baited because, oh, God. You know what? I, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna get back to you on that.
That's fine.
Yeah, because, because there's a difference, and I don't want to misspeak.
I just, I see us.
There's a difference between, yeah, abatement.
We get all excited. Think about, you know, rock side, right? And so we get all excited, oh, we can, we can collect taxes on, on new construction, then, oh, wait, there's all this political pressure to approve this abatement, because we want development in the community, and.
I think what Dr. Smolik was talking about is a tiff.
Yeah. And so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I will need to get back to you on that, and I apologize for being stumped. But, but in my mind, again, I don't want to misspeak.
It's going to be the highlight of my evening, right?
That's unusual, right?
There could be a difference between like, property being exempted from the tax listed duplicate, like the Cleveland Clinic, you know, gets its property taxes exempted. So there's property, but it's not added to the list. It's added to the big bundle versus it's added to the bundle, but your property taxes are baited. You don't have to pay. It's slight difference, you know, between not getting added to the list at all, and having it added to the list, but oh, by the way, you don't have to pay. And that's, that's what I need to, you know, sort out. So, yeah, so, yeah, thanks for that question. All right. How much time do I have? Negative?
Two minutes.
Yeah, 5:01.
Well, if, if we can have you, I know you brought the five-year forecast. I mean, essentially, our, our questions are this, or at least, I think, our questions are this. How long can we wait before we put an operating on? I mean, if we're going to go forward with the bond issue in November, obviously, the longer the separation between the bond issue and an operating, the better politically and pragmatically. And second, what would you recommend in terms of a millage? I think those are really probably our core questions.
So the board member, did you go there, have to crank your neck and look at your shoulder?
And so what I did in preparation for that question is, I took, I took Sean's five-year forecast, this is what Sean sent to me in an Excel format, and all the stuff in color that you see is stuff that I've added. So if there are any issues related to any of that, that's on me. And so Sean provided everything else. So what Pam has highlighted there, see the 3.9, there we go, the 3.9 mils. If you were to put a 3.9 mil levy on the ballot next year, then you're looking at the blue shaded cells. Yes. Because then what would happen is you'd get a half-year collection in, in fiscal 2024, because column I, I believe, is fiscal 2024, and, and on and on.
K is 26.
Twenty, K is 20, yes. So I is 24, J is 25, K is 26. So you can see in 25 and 26, you get the full year's collections on 3.9 mils, which is 9.7 million dollars. You get half of that in that first year. So, so if you were to put on a 3.9 mil levy, you're going to wind up with, bottom line there, cell K 73, and Pam has it highlighted there, 172, 664, you're in the black. Because right now, you're negative, you're in the red, 24 million. That's two, two above Pam's cursor, yeah. Right, right now, Sean has you at 24 million in the hole. If you put 3.9 on next year, you can estimate, you know, certain, a million assumptions, disclaimer, 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 you're going to wind up with 172 in the red. Now, Pam, why don't you change 3.9 to 4.9, and let's see what happens. Focus on the 172. Pam, just change 3.9 to 4.9.
You have to hit enable editing.
Oh, enable editing. Okay, there you go.
And then you can change that.
Yeah. And then just make it 4.9, and just watch what happens to the 172. Now hit enter. Okay. Now, you went from 3.9 to 4.9. Now, instead of 172,000, you've got 6.4 million in the black. And so the, that's just by, by way of example. Now, the other thing to look at is, let's focus on the, I don't know what you call it, salmon, pinkish, whatever. So if you were to wait until 2024 to put a 4.9 mil in this example, current expense levy on the ballot, or its equivalent, an emergency levy or whatever, that equates to 4.9 mils, if you were to wait a year, you would not have 6.4 million dollars in the bank. That's, that's the, that's if you did it in 2023. Wait a year, and you're still 5.8 in the hole. That's the, that's the difference that, kind of in real terms here, that rises from waiting an extra year. And so if we want to get that number in the black, Pam, let's take it up to 5.9 and see what happens, looking at the salmon.
Um, Rick, Mr. Kreis has a question.
Now, we're still in the hole. So we have to go even higher than 5.9. Yes.
I just have one question, probably to Sean. Are these preconsolidation numbers?
These are preconsolidation numbers.
Yeah.
So we also, down at the bottom, have their 27 to 31, we extended it out, just to show you, we're not just looking at your five, but beyond.
Yeah. Sean gave me the, his, his estimates going out beyond that. That's the row number 78, and then we're just carrying this exercise forward. So let's go to 6.9, Pam, and just, I want to get that, that number in salmon. I want to get that in the black. I just want to see how far, all right, now we're in the black. So somewhere between 5.9 and 6.9, if we wait an extra year, if we put a levy on in 2024, we're going to be in the black. See the new bottom line there, K 74, yes. Pam's highlighting it. Now we're in the black. So that, you know, what you, what you guys can do, you know, at your leisure, is to kind of, you know, play around with this, and, and plug in certain millage scenarios and say, all right, what about 3.9 if we wait a year? What about 6.9 if we do it early? How far out can we go and be in the black? Because the answer to the question, you know, what's the right number, is going to depend upon your goal. If your goal is just to be in the black at the end of the five-year forecast, this exercise will help you figure out what that number needs to be. If your goal is, I want 60 days cash at the, at the end of the day, in year five of the five-year forecast, that's a different question. And so your number might have to be a little bit higher. I'm sorry, I think you had a question.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Is there any way, right now, leading into what we have to do in the next meeting, to change K 64 to reflect post-consolidation?
I could.
A post-consolidation number, so we could see what would happen post-consolidation? Because we've gotten that question a lot. Can you, residents, constituents, can you promise us that you can consolidate a new bond and still not need an operating? Like, they want to know that. I want to know that as a board member, too. So I would love to see K 64 reflective of post-consolidation, our, our best educated guess on what post-consolidation would look like, capturing that savings as the plan is proposed for us to vote on tonight, and to see the blue and the salmon numbers, how they kind of move.
I think we, I think we sort of have that, right, Sean? I mean, it's, you know, we're, we're at a 3.15 now, million-dollar savings in terms of what our projections are for the consolidation. We're at negative 24 million, so even if you take, you know, 10 off of that.
You take 6.2 off that, it's two years, you're looking at.
I thought you said we could take three years off of it, Sean.
We're 22 and 23. So, yeah, three years, so.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
You're taking off.
24 minus 9.3 still.
You're still 15 million dollars.
But so if we had that, though, and, that was, that was my question. Could you do 3.9 and consolidation and get here, so we're not asking for an additional three mils? Because that three mils is essentially, here's the bottom line, that three mils, or one mil more, is essentially the bond issue.
Pam, can you put 3.9 back in that slot?
So that's kind of my question, like, is there a happy medium?
So if you look at 3.9.
It is, but.
If she looks at 3.9 with a new bottom line as minus 9.5, if we take off 9 million, 9.1 million, I think we said, you're almost breaking even?
For those years.
And that's if you wait until 2024 to put it on the ballot.
Right.
Because that's, that's what the salmon represents, is a delay of a year. So, yeah, with the consolidation, you're essentially a wash at the end of the five-year forecast, if you're going to assume.
Put it on 23, you're saying.
Yeah. So, again, if that's the goal, if the goal is to get to the end of the five-year forecast in the black, plus consolidation, and, you know, you're, you're roughly, you're roughly there.
So in the information to the board, when we get to the, the meeting here in an hour, can you have this reflective of post-consolidation?
I could.
Thank you.
I already have a spreadsheet.
I figured you could easily copy and paste the numbers to the right col, I just didn't want to mess up the formula if we all start dancing in there right now, so.
Okay.
Okay. I hate to.
I know.
Fool us along, but we've got an executive session to consider a collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you for all of your.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rick.
Insightful as always.
Pam, do we need to end this and then go to executive session?
We have to vote to go into executive session.
So.
So, all right, so I move to adopt resolution 2022-06-197 to adjourn to the executive session relative to negotiations.
Well, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2022-06-197. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mrs. Brod.
Yes.
And Mr. Kreis.
Yes. Being resolved, the Board of Education and the Department of City School District hereby adjourns to executive session at?
5:10.
5:10 PM relative to negotiations. Note, Ohio law provides that school boards may meet in executive session to discuss legal issues, property issues, and personnel issues. Because of the confidential nature of these issues, this part of the meeting is closed to the general public, and the matters to be discussed are not specifically listed on the agenda. No resolution will be voted on during the executive session. All voting must take place in open session.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.